Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting of April 8th. Before I turn tonight's meeting over to Mr. Valani for the board reorganization, I'd like to just make a brief statement if I may. To Mr. Valani, to all the employees at Town Hall, all the committee members and board members who serve our community, my fellow board members to my right, and to you, the citizens of Milford, I say thank you for allowing me to serve as your chairman of the Board of Selectmen. It's been a pleasure and I appreciate all your support. Thank you very, very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Valani.
Yes, thank you, Selectmen Walsh. At this point, I would entertain motions for the selection of the chairman for the upcoming year for the Board of Selectmen.
Rick, I'll make a motion to elect Bill Buckley as chairman.
And I would second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for your trust and I just want to congratulate Mike for his success in the last election. It's hard. It's hard to run for election. It's hard to go out there and knock on doors or go to forums, let people know sometimes how you feel on controversial issues or other issues, but you take a stand and, once again, congratulations, Mike, for your efforts.
Thank you.
You did a great job and, you know, resounding win. But with that, I'd like to open on another positive note and I'd like to ask the Hennesys and Hennesy family to stand. We're going to do a presentation. I want to read from the citation from my fellow members of the board. "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to Gerald F. Hennessey in recognition of your retirement of forty-seven years as a member of the Board of Health, as well of your many years of dedicated public service to the town of Milford and its residents. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express hope and good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." You know, this talks about your retirement after forty-seven years, but I tend to look at it as your service of forty-seven years and your dedication to this community, which is not in question. You've done a great job. I can imagine the time you'll be spending with your grandchildren and all that, you'll be missed. It's great to see the turnout here from your peers and other board members and that alone shows an awful lot of respect for you as a person and your service. So I just want to thank you and congratulate you.
This is given by myself and my two colleagues. Thank you very much. Lots of luck in your retirement.
Before you run out of here, I think a couple of us want to say something and I'm sure, and I see the legislators here. Jerry, on a professional note, forty-seven years on the Board of Health, twenty-four years on the Fire Department. We were just recently got to join Jerry at a fundraiser for the Fire Department. He's as popular now as you were back on the job and to the credit and the respect that you get from -- the credit and respect that you still get from your fellow brothers on the department even currently is just very impressive. On a personal note, I had some of the best laughs of my life with you and Emilio, the dynamic duo, and I've always appreciated that and I mean that sincerely. You guys made me cry, I laugh so hard on a regular basis with you two. So I very much appreciate that. I know you certainly miss him, but I would be remiss if I didn't bring him up because I got to know you as well through him. Because of your bride and my mother working together, I've known you folks for a very long time, but I really got to know you through those formidable years and I just always appreciate the advice and counsel that you've provided to me and I just wanted you to know that that's never gone unappreciated. But and to your family, you obviously raised other folks that gave me that belief in public service as well, so it's in the genes and that's very impressive as well. So thank you for your professional service in both capacities, but thank you more for your, for being who you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Jerry, I met you when I first came to town and you've always, always been an outstanding gentleman. You've always treated anybody you run into with the utmost respect. I give you a lot of credit serving with Mr. Mazzakelli for forty-seven years, but that's all right. But, you know, your commitment to this community is what I just talked about earlier. Thank you to the board members and the people that serve this great community. That's what makes Milford, Milford, you know, and, you know, as you know, after forty-seven years, there's some nights you walk out and you just say, why do I do this? You do it because you care. You have a love for the community, you have a feeling in your heart that you want to make things right, you want to take care of the citizens of this community and to see that you did it, I didn't, I was with Bill, I didn't know he did it forty-seven years either. I'm just amazed at that. And as Will spoke, twenty-four years in the Fire Department.
Actually, thirty-five years.
Thirty-five, so longer, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I think, I talk about this all the time, Jerry, is what's so important to people like yourself is to be mentors. Mentors to those young, now I can say women on the Fire Department, to be mentors and say, I know what it's like on Thanksgiving not to be home. I know what it's like not to be home on Christmas and, you know.
That was my life.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, but you get through it, you get through it and that's why the people of this community need to say a special thank you this evening for everything you've done for us and it will never go unnoticed. Thank you very, very much.
And now before we go further, we have Representative Brian Murray who would like to say a few words on your behalf.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations, Mike, on your reelection.
Thank you.
And Bill, congratulations on another round of chairmanship and Will, congratulations just for being with these two guys. There you go. Jerry, you can sit for me.
Thank you very much.
I have to stand because I don't have a chair up there anymore. But it is with mixed feelings that, you know, I'm here tonight to recognize you upon your retirement for so long. Your name along with Paul's and really the other members have been synonymous with the Board of Health in Milford. And, you know, the word progressive today gets tossed around a lot, but let's think about some of the things that you were involved in over, and I had forty-eight years, I had you elected in nineteen seventy-one, but some of the things that you were involved in starting off with, what I remember is the Milford Dump. And I was young enough to remember going down there with my dad, you know, in the car and you just had a bag of trash and it was like driving through, you know, Armageddon and, you know, there were piles of things and, you know, burning and refrigerators and maybe a body of two and my father just sort of threw it out the window and he turned around and he got out of there so fast. Now, to take that area, that blighted area that really ruined us to the environment area and turning it around and taking the effort and capping it and turning it into twenty-three acres plus of recreational and open space area where thousands of kids and their families can enjoy it season, throughout all the seasons in perpetuity is a tremendously progressive idea and a lot of hard work and the work that you did with the other members of the Board of Health and the pot commissioners to spearhead that really changed the complexion of this community really for the future and the generations that will go beyond this. Some of the other things that you were involved in that I thought about, raising the age for sale of tobacco products, age twenty-one, that was done in the town of Milford. The Commonwealth just passed that last year statewide. Again, you were leading the charge on that, out in front of the curve on that. Recognizing the opioid situation and involving school nurses with help of the kids in the school to raise the opioid awareness, tremendously progressive. Recycling, curbside recycling, one of the first communities around here to do that, tremendously great for the environment, an idea that at the time was pretty radical and forced a change of human behavior in the town, all for the better. All of these things now are being recognized as being so good and so productive for the environment, but you and your other board members really led the way and that's really remarkable to think about. And it's a tremendous achievement and it's a tremendous credit to you. The town of Milford owes you a huge debt for all of your work. So I'm very pleased to be here and I have a citation from the House of Representatives and it reads as follows. "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offered sincerest congratulations to Gerald F. Hennessey in recognition of your retirement from the Milford Board of Health after forty-eight years of dedicated service that has greatly improved the health and well-being of the entire community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this eighth day of April twenty nineteen and signed Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and authored by myself, Brian Murray." But wait, there's more. One time only, you get to have, just because you're retiring tonight, you get to have a laminated article also to put on your refrigerator.
Thank you, Brian. And we'll call Senator Fatman's representative.
Leaving, leaving, Bill Frederick, I'm with Senator Fatman's office. He sends his regrets that he couldn't be here tonight. He's on the other side of the district tonight. But, you know, as I was sitting here today, as Representative Murray pointed out, all your accomplishments, as someone who's young and who's in public service, it's an honor to be in front of someone who has served their community for forty-seven years.
You were trying to say who's old.
No, someone who's just starting off, it's really inspiring to see someone who's served their community for so long and it's such an honor to be in your presence. So thank you very much for all that you've done for the town of Milford and is part of one of the towns in our district. It's truly a great thing for our community. So I have here a citation on behalf of the Massachusetts State Senate and it reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Gerald Hennessey in recognition of your forty-seven years of service on the Board of Health. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success." That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And it's signed by President Karen Spilka, attested to by Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, and it's offered by State Senator Ryan Fatman. Congratulations.
And Jerry, just one more thing before you leave. One of the things we've omitted in the discussion that is significant that other communities bear the brunt of and it's in part because of you and your colleagues, you know, one of the things is we don't pay for special bags and collect additional fees and I want to thank you for your leadership in that space because that's important to the community as well. So you stood up to fight the fights when it was time to fight and you, you made the best decisions possible all the way through your forty-seven years and I didn't want that to be left out because sometimes it's the decisions we don't make or refuse to go along with that are popular in other communities that are not popular here. So thank you again. If you have anything to say, please.
Well, I just, I never dreamed that forty-seven years ago I'd ask the song on one particular board and it was through the support of my lovely wife, my children, my grandchildren. I can't say enough about my guys out back there. Paul and Lenny and Kenny were very special to me and, you know, I don't, I don't remember recalling having a battle. You guys can't say that. But the support of all the other boys in the county, the illegals somewhere, everybody took care of everybody down there. Wonderful work and that manner. So I just want to say thank you again for letting me do this for forty-seven years, you know. Like you said, elections and wrecking and knocking on the road, it's a tough, tough job for a candidate.
It takes a special courage to get out there and do that and stand up for your beliefs, so, and you have that.
I won't do it yet though. I'll sneak in.
But thank you again on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you. The young man with the crutches will slowly make his way out of the door. No more injuries.
Well deserved.
Amy?
Sorry.
Take care of him.
Was it any other day when I was there? At the school, when I went in to talk to the students?
Yes.
Yeah?
What day was it?
I was in twice.
Which day?
Last week, I was there Thursday.
I was there, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take care.
Hey, Eric. How you doing, Charlie? No, call for, call for a motion of the signing of the warrant?
So moved.
I would second that.
That's unanimous. Next, the approval of the March eighteenth minutes. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I would second that as well.
And that's unanimous as well. Is there anybody in the audience who is not on the agenda who would like to speak to the board? Okay. That being said, not seeing anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just take a second.
Sure.
I'm going to put on my President of the Friends and Milford Area Special Athletes Organization, I've been the president of now for quite a few years and it's definitely my greatest honor that I've had the opportunity to serve in that capacity. And yesterday we had a very successful fundraiser for the second year in a row with Central Tavern. I want to publicly thank Paul Acavelli and that establishment for offering the space and making a great porkette dinner and we raised a few thousand bucks on a Sunday afternoon and that's going to go a long way for a lot of our kids and uniforms and all the things that we supplement the Mass, Milford Special Olympics. I also want to publicly acknowledge and thank both you and Mike for being there. I invite you two to everything and every time it has to do with my kids, you guys are always there, whether you can be there for an hour or do the whole thing like you both were able to do yesterday, I really appreciate that. And I want people to know too that, you know, it's on a Sunday, we all have commitments and otherwise and you both found the time to be there and that did not go unnoticed. People very much appreciated it and, you know, if there's ever a time where our kids don't feel they get the support that all the other kids do, I want folks to know that they do. And you guys are there and I very much appreciate that.
It was a great event.
So thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've, we have the minutes now. Invitation to speak is passed, so we'll go to public hearings, which there are none. Next, we'll go to the scheduled appointments and specifically the Public Transportation Advisory Committee. Come on up, guys.
All right, so where do you want to start?
Well, you've given us some sense of ridership. Is there any analysis on it that tells a different story? Sometimes the numbers tell one story. Is there another, is there any thing greater to add?
Yes, I mean, it's been increasing, ridership's been increasing, not a lot, but it's definitely been going up. Our best time, our best month was probably twelve hundred and, you know, anywhere between nine and twelve hundred consistently every month for the last year.
That's a lot of rides.
It is.
It is.
And I think it's going to continue to increase. I mean, that's a trend it's been taking, from what we've been watching. Everything seems to be going smooth. The, there's no, there's been a few little issues here and there, small complaints and stuff and we've dealt with that. So, but it's been going really smooth. I, you know, I still think it's a great service, obviously, a lot of people utilizing, a lot of, I see people on and off all day long. I'm all over town, I see it constantly, so it's definitely being utilized. You know, whether it's the same group, new people, I don't think it really matters, but places like the high school has picked up a lot. Some places have dropped off and they're talking about changing the route somewhat come July. The MWRT does that every six months, they look at it. So we're going to probably be adding the courthouse to that and taking another stop off, we're not sure quite yet, but some, some stops are really falling off and ours is a huge one.
I think the last couple times we talked to you, you gentlemen, about this, we talked about, we finally, we need to get year-over-year results, right? And that's something we finally now have. We're now into our fourth calendar year, but we have two full calendar years of numbers and if you look at them, they increase, you know, essentially month to month and year over year as well. From twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, we had an increase of three hundred or so riders. So, you know, small incremental increases, but it is moving in the right direction. And as, I know, I don't drive around town nearly as much as Scott does, but when I do see that bus, I always see people on it. So it's been nice to see it. The service is certainly being, being utilized.
Yeah, it would be nice to add to that. I know one of the things that, you know, I had a discussion with some folks that bought the ARDR facility or what the community knows as Foster Forbes and asked them to inquire with the state about the possibility of MBTA stations. So, you know, the services from bus to rail are significant and not having that service would have an impact. And so they offered to look into it, no commitments, obviously. I think it would be a great place, it sits on the rail line. I think my sense is their speed at which they want to make this flip would probably preclude it, but I asked them to please, please, please consider it and we can work with them and the state on the possibility. It's a slow process when you work with the state, but I see the possibility of some of the things we're talking about downtown, working hand and glove with public transportation as a bus service, public transportation as a rail service. And so you just never know how all of these things can come together. We look at communities that have rail and there's some, there's been some benefit for them. There's also a cost, there's an assessment. So it's a balancing act, but I appreciate, and I speak for the board, appreciate what you two do in helping people who might otherwise not have any options to be able to get to work benefit from the public transportation, which is what we're about. We're trying to, as a board, make a more vibrant downtown, have more walkers, have more transport and take away some of the cars. This is, this is part of the way you do that. So I appreciate you keep looking at stops. I know that people were making requests for the library, you accommodated that, you've made changes, you've listened and that's all we can ask of people who serve the community, you know, as volunteers, on top of your, your day jobs and the amount of time away from your family and at meetings, I appreciate that and behalf of the board, I just wanted to thank you. I'll go to the board members. Will, any comments, questions?
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions. The numbers, you know, speak for themselves and the only comment I'll have is that in my wife's capacity at school, Lisa took, has been taking a number of parents and, and students on the bus and she actually, never mind raved about how clean the bus was and everything like that, but she said the driver was unbelievable. Super friendly, informative, had everything down, so she just, I just wanted to report that back that, you know, that, especially when you said that the number of students in, at the high school. So I know even our special needs kids are getting and learning and, you know, a couple of them now have jobs at grocery stores on the other side of town because of that bus.
Right.
This is what we want, you know, we want these kids to go, get jobs, be productive and be, you know, and feel just like everybody else does, so. And I know the numbers, you guys say the numbers are growing slowly, but they're, they're going in the right direction and we are servicing populations of people that can use it.
Yeah, I think we were, we were all pleasantly surprised by the numbers that we've seen at the high school specifically. You know, we were always kind of wondering where that number would be, how many, you know, especially with the age difference too, excuse me, the restriction on how old some of you would be to ride the bus. So those students would be afraid to ride and get on it and that, that stop has been a pretty solid one for this move, so.
It took a while to convince students to actually use the bus, you know, they see it and they're like, yeah, I don't want to use that, but they, they're starting to.
You know, it's also interesting, that is such like a suburban thought process when, you know, my wife grew up in Fall River, she was on the bus grocery shop there with her grandmother since she was six years old. And that's as far as she remembers. Everyone I work with at the T in Boston, they've been riding the bus way before they were allowed to, you know, and then when they're, and as soon as you become twelve years old in Boston, they give you a Charlie card. So it's just, you know, it's just our way of thinking and getting people acclimated to it, but, you know, in all your urban areas, people are jumping on and off buses ever since they're a kid.
Cultural shift.
Yeah, we've had a lot of help with private organizations and charity organizations to help outreach and, you know, people that don't speak English, I'll reach into them and it's been going, you know, a lot of people have been helping us. It's, you know, it's not a simple thing, but outreach has been difficult, but we've been working on a commercial at Milford TV that's actually going to teach you how to use the bus. It's going to be a quick, you know, a minute and a half long commercial, tell you exactly how it works, what to do, where it goes, and, you know, we're going to post that up, so.
Yeah, tutorial.
Yeah, we've been actively working on trying to come up with different ideas for maps as well and trying to figure out how to get the community and community businesses involved, so, you know, Olivas, for example, you know, that's kind of a, a Milford landmark, right? So they could potentially get on there and say, okay, this is that spot because the bus goes right by it. So try to get our businesses involved. When you talk about revitalizing downtown, that's something we can utilize going forward as well. So I know we had some pretty good progress on that, our last meeting and really pushing that forward.
Good. Mike, anything?
Yes, you know, we always talk, when we talk about the, the bus, we always seem to focus so much on numbers and, and I talk about it all the time that you gentlemen come before us. Sit at Dana Farber and watch that bus pull up and it might have one person on it, that's the only way they can get there for treatment. Watch it go into Milford Hospital, watch it go into the grocery stores, watch it go into the shopping centers and that's the only way that some of those people, that's the only way that they can get to where they have to get to. So I'm not saying that the numbers aren't important, but it's again another example of the great services that we provide to the citizens of this community and I'm glad to see that they're going in, in the right direction. And I was shocked myself when I was campaigning, I happened to go by the high school one day and I saw all the kids getting off the bus and the first thing I said to myself was, did a school bus break down? I was amazed at the number of kids that got off at Milford High School and walked up down the parking lot towards the front door. It's just another service that we provide to people in this community, maybe those children would normally walk, you know, and now they're able to get on the bus. So it's just a, it's, it's a great service that we provide. I have a lot of people reach out to me particularly with Dana Farber and Milford Hospital and how it's just very helpful for them to get there. And so again, I want to say thank you to the both of you and to your committee for the great job you do and let's just keep going in the right direction because it is, it's a, it's a real diamond in this community. It really is.
Is there anything we're missing? Is there anything you need?
I want to mention one thing. We had an Eagle Scout project done, I don't know if you've noticed, I think we had some talk about that. Josh Aaronson put up a couple benches. He put one up at Shaw's at that bus stop and he put one in front of the high school. So I actually see people sitting there waiting for the bus all the time, so it was a very, very good job he did. Shout out to Josh.
That's good, good to mention him as well.
I should recognize him for that.
Yeah, that would be a great idea if we could recognize Josh for that help in, helping that. Thank you, Will, and thank you, Scott, for bringing that up, bringing that to our attention again, especially now that it's complete. Okay, if there's not anything else, thank you for, for coming in, talking to us. Again, as you work with the FinCom and work with other community members, this isn't always something you're going to see born out on a spreadsheet, what's going to help other businesses financially, what's going to help the individuals financially, what it's doing for the community. So, you know, I'd ask that the first thing you, when you get on tap with the FinCom is ask them to throw away their spreadsheets and get on a human level, get on a human level about the service and, and what we're doing. We're lagging other communities, we're lagging as a, as a country, we're lagging other countries. I had the opportunity to be in Taiwan and China last week and it was just amazing what they've invested in infrastructure for public transportation. And it's happening everywhere, it's happening slowly in the United States, but I'd like to see more of it.
Yeah, well, I, I see this increasing, I don't ever see it going backwards.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, you talk nine hundred riders a month, you're talking probably half of that's probably the same people every day.
Right.
Rely on that.
Right.
You know, it's great that we can give that service to them.
Good for you.
Your point on transit and train, the MBTA and all that, I think this is a good stepping stone for us to show that there is a thirst for it here in this town, that it's necessary. And I'm with you, I, I hope that you can get the MBTA, there's so many of them.
Yeah, there are.
MBTA to, to move into, into Milford and extend that to that Ford Park line.
But do us a favor on behalf of the board, please send back our thank you to your, your committee who are working so hard on giving up their evenings with their, their families or afternoons or whenever your meetings happen, but, and I know that it's more than that, right? It's also FinCom, it's also other boards, it's also this meeting tonight, but please send along our thank you to your committee.
Will do.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have on scheduled appointments, Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee with Reno Deluzio. Good evening, Reno, good to see you again.
Good evening, Reno.
Mike, congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to another term.
I am.
You are and I am. All right, I'm here tonight as chairman of the Town All right, I'm here tonight as chairman of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee to give you an update on where we are with the pre-town meeting forum planning. As you're aware, and, and for the audience, one of the enumerated duties of our committee is to organize pre-town meeting forums. So the committee has been active in doing that. The forum will be held on, for the, for the May 20th Annual Town Meeting. The forum will be held on Tuesday, May 15th at 7:00 PM in the Upper Hall. The committee has conducted a pretty extensive media blitz this go-around. We had our first pre-town meeting forum last, prior to the last October meeting, and for the first one, it was pretty successful. We announced the meeting, we sent requests, and we also sent requests to all town meeting members and the public to submit articles they would like to see addressed at the pre-town meeting forum. Then on or about March 21st, press releases went out to all the media, Milford Daily News, The Town Crier, The Milford Patch, WMRC, The Citizens for Milford webpage, and recently to O Jornal, which is a Portuguese publication. A letter was also sent to town meeting members and was posted on the town's website, and flyers were posted on the town meeting bulletin board and the library bulletin board. So we've got pretty good coverage out there of when this is going to happen and how it's going to happen. In, in addition, I interviewed at Milford TV with Al Correa on the That Milford Show, and with Kevin Rudden on 30 Minutes with The Town Crier. Tonight's briefing is timely, because last Friday, we changed the date to submit articles to be considered for the pre-town meeting forum from April 10th to April 17th. Town meeting members were notified of the deadline change, and the notification also included links to the YouTube interview, YouTube of the two interviews, which may prove to be informative, because we had a casual conversation about what this is all about, and if people desire to look at those two interviews, they would get some more insight as to what is the purpose of this town, pre-town meeting forum is all about. And, and the town's website was also updated with this new information. Now, on April 22nd, the committee will select not more than 10 articles from those received with the highest responses. In other words, we will pick the articles that got the most interest. During that week, the selected sponsors will be notified, and the committee will be preparing an agenda, and we already have ground rules, they'll be sent to the sponsors, and the town meeting members will also get notice of what the agenda is and what the ground rules are. In conclusion, I want to take, I want to encourage, I want to take the opportunity to encourage the town meeting members and the public to submit their articles of preference by April 17th. Either by email to tmsic@townofmilford.com, or to the Town of Milford by U.S. mail, Town Meeting Study Improvement Committee, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass. But most importantly, please show up. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Reno, just a comment before you leave, I just want to say that, you know, I want to thank you and your committee, because your sole purpose in life is simply to inform town meeting members and to give background information for those that seek it out. Another, you're giving them another venue, another opportunity to hear before they set a town meeting and have to make a choice. So I want to thank you and the committee for working on that. It enhances citizen involvement, it enhances knowledge, and for those that seek to understand before drawing a conclusion or having an opinion, I appreciate that for, them for reaching out and participating in these forums. So I want to thank you. Is there anything else the members would like to add or comment?
No, I don't have any questions, Reno, but thank you very much. I know much time you put into this, and it's making a big difference. I know at, at the October town meeting, I heard some of the town meeting members, who I would have said just having casual conversation with, say that they, they very much appreciated it, and, you know, a lot of questions weren't even answered prior to town meeting, and, you know, I just, hey?
And they, I'm sorry, it's Tuesday evening, May, what's the date again?
May 15th.
May 15th?
Just a week before town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think that might be Wednesday, May 15th, Reno?
I'm sorry, May 15th, Wednesday, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
May 15th, and that is, at what time again?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. I just wanted to give you another opportunity to say it again, so.
Well, I'm glad that you did, because I corrected it.
In the event, okay.
But you know what it does, Reno, is it, it, to Will's point he made earlier, is, we saw it firsthand, it, town meeting members come to town meeting better informed, and it streamlines town meeting, you know, where there would be over and over and over discussion. It seems like a lot of that is, is, you know, is squelled by this committee and putting together this, you know, this preview of town meeting.
Well, you know, the town meeting is not a question and answer session.
Right.
It's a debating forum.
Right.
And, and in the survey, the town meeting survey we did, there were comments that said, "We'd like an opportunity to ask questions." Well, this forum provides that venue.
Right.
Where a question and answer period can go between the sponsor and the audience.
Right.
And we advise both sides not to advocate for or against an article.
Right.
Just briefly describe the article, and then get into the question and answer session. It also has a second benefit, in that when the sponsor goes through that, he gets a feel for what the questions are. So when he or she gets to town meeting a week later, there's an opportunity to address those issues, to avoid the question to come up in the first place.
And be better prepared.
To your point, it would streamline the meeting a little further.
Right.
So we hope gradually it will pick up in, in popularity, but like anybody says, you can lead them and give them the opportunity, but you can't force them to drink, so we're trying to lead them to the opportunity, and hopefully it'll be successful.
Once again, I want to say the same thing I said to Brian and Scott, to thank, please thank the committee on our behalf for their participation and willingness to spend time on this in, in meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reno.
Have a good night.
Next, we have Town Administrators Report, but before we do that, you know, there was a thing that I omitted with all of the hoopla associated with Jerry Hennessy leaving in the presentation, I just wanted to go over some things that as the new chair, I want to make sure that we maintain focus on, and as folks, folks ask me my goals, some of the things that, that I want to make sure we focus on. Downtown revitalization remains very high on the list, these aren't prioritized, but we've talked about downtown revitalization, we've talked about all the intertwined components of downtown revitalization, like transportation, like an active downtown revitalization committee, the facade program, which we're going to take up pieces of this evening. You know, so I, I want to make sure that the community members understand that this board is dedicated to supporting grants, looking at zoning initiatives, and any other creative mechanisms that we can use as tools in the toolbox to help revitalize downtown and to bring together, you know, businesses and efforts to, to, to make changes that are positive for our downtown. The next piece of it is, I want to make sure that we maintain our financial leadership. Our leadership is a result of many people working hard, but I also want to, so I want to call out, you know, the FinCom, Finance Department, Accounting Department, Treasurer. I want to say that along with Rick and other department heads, their work to keep us in the solid financial shape is outstanding. The FinCom helps us vet those things that we bring as initiatives, to truly understand the cost and impact, look at opportunities where there may be a cost associated with borrowing, or look at opportunities where there, maybe there's a rent to own versus a buy on vehicles. So creative initiatives that we bring, some of these folks bring from the private sector are helpful. I want to make sure that we have thoughtful planning. You know, I think one of the things that benefits our community is that we actively engage in a five-year plan, I want to make sure that's maintained, and that, that, that five-year process also allows there to be equity in department initiatives. And what I mean by that is, it isn't necessarily the most vocal or the most political that will be first in line, we're, we're going through thoughtful process that makes sure that different boards, different committees, different initiatives, get their opportunity in the sun, get their opportunity to be explained, and get their opportunity to be funded. And that's independent of some of the advocacy that may exist, that may try to move it up in, in line, we're trying to make sure that everybody gets their opportunity. The water company, the water company, and, and more specifically, not just the purchase of the water company, but to explain that, it's to make sure we control and manage our own water resources. That's really what it's about. This is not about acquisition for the sake of acquisition, but to make sure this community is not one of the six communities in the Commonwealth that has a private company and is beholden to a private company to manage our water resources. We are going to continue to prioritize that, and as chair, I'll continue to make that one of the top activities. There's also a commitment to public safety. If you'll notice in this upcoming warrant, we're looking to add people to the fire department. That's important, the public safety component is important to our community members, it's important to all of our families, so we want to make sure that's done well. We want to make sure that over the course of the next year, we have the opportunity to hire interim chief in the time it's going to take to, to look through that search process. We want to be thoughtful in our hiring of the next chief, and I already mentioned the manpower issues. So, and with that, now that I'm on that, I, I just want to say that there's an opportunity to increase citizen participation, and I want to do that beginning, while we've been doing that all along, but I want to do that even further tonight. What I want to do is name a designate for the Police Chief Search Committee as the chair's prerogative through the town meeting bylaws. So I'd like to appoint Donna Nero as my designate on the Police, Police Chief Search Committee. And I want to thank Mike for his attendance in the two meetings that he's attended, helping get that process started.
I mean, you don't disrespect, Mr. Chairman, I've researched that, and there is no removal process from that committee. I was appointed as the sitting chair, and I will stay on that committee, because there is no removal process on that. And again, I mean, you dis, no disrespect.
Okay.
But I will serve on that committee.
Well, we can, we can vet that through council and the various councils that we have, because I've also researched it as well, so we'll, we're obviously getting some conflicting information. It's not a removal process, the way I look at it, it's the chair's, the chair's designate, but we can research that further with council. What I'm looking for is to add diversity. I don't think that the Board of Selectmen need two votes, one in a subcommittee fashion, and also in the final vote and decision that the committee comes up with. I think, I think it's opportunity to, in this case, add a woman. We have one woman on the committee, so to improve diversity is helpful, and I think ultimately, the Board of Selectmen gets to make their choice, so that was my rationale in that thought process. So with that being said, I'll go to the Town Administrators Report. Rick, do you have anything?
Ah, yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items tonight. One, I'm just pleased to report the Town of Milford Tree City application has been approved by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and it has been sent to the Arbor Day Foundation for final approval. There is a recognition event on May 29th, 2019, in Sturbridge. The Cadet Girl Scout Troop will be attending our next meeting, the Board of Selectmen, on April 22nd, and asking the board to issue a proclamation to recognize April 26th, 2019 as Arbor Day in Milford, as is one of the requirements. Second item is the Milford Water Company has informed me their hydrant flushing program started yesterday, Sunday, April 7th. It's scheduled at night between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. It will continue throughout the months of April, May, and June, until the entire system has been completed. It's conducted to remove any accumulated sediment from the water pipes that may impair water quality. It also provides the opportunity to inspect hydrants, to ensure they will operate properly in the event of fire. During the program, you may notice a temporary loss in water pressure and water discoloration. They're asking you to run your water first before using laundry, and if you have any questions, you could contact the water company. I do want to advise the board that the Records Management Implementation Program will be starting on April 29th, King Information Systems, Inc. They will begin in the records vault on the first floor of Town Hall, and I will continue to update the board as the project progresses. I do want to update the board on the Town Administrator Evaluation Process. I will be sending each board member the evaluation form used to evaluate the Town Administrator. You should receive those by midweek. I will also prepare and forward a completed self-evaluation for the board's review. If everything works, we could schedule the evaluation for the next meeting, Monday, April 22nd. And finally, I would like to report on the local building inspector search process. As the board may know, HR Director Maureen Gifford has been examining how to attract qualified individuals for the local building inspector position. Maureen, along with Building Commissioner Matt Markhart, have been working to update the descriptions for the positions in the inspection department, including the local building inspector. I spoke with them this morning, they will finish the updated descriptions this week. They will then be submitting the descriptions to the Personnel Board for their approval, and also for review by this board. Maureen is also in the process of preparing a benchmark salary listing for area towns to also be submitted to the board, so we can compare our salary to towns of similar nature, size, population, et cetera. So they are actively working, it's, as we've talked about for probably too long now, a difficult position to attract good candidates, and Maureen and Matt have been working on, on trying to do that. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's a lot there, so I'll go to the board members. Will?
Yeah, just regarding the, the Building Inspection Department, I think it's also important for this board, once we hopefully get a full-time building inspector, or at least, as we've discussed, a number of part-timers, because of the amount of work that's going, going on. I think even if it has to wait till next year, once we fill those vacancies, I really think this board has to seriously talk about getting another zoning person as well. You know, right now, we have the Building Commissioner and Erica Robertson doing all of the zoning, and let me tell you, I think we could probably have three Ericas, and they still wouldn't get to everything. I think we've made, this board's made a serious commitment for inspections to be done, and for all the zoning issues that we've passed, and things that, you know, we're trying to clean up, yet at this point, it's, it can't all get addressed by one individual, and whether that's another part-time, I'm not trying to add, you know, just add headcount for the, for the, sake of adding headcount, but we're putting so much responsibility and asking the Building Department and the Inspection Department to do so much, and I think, I'm probably preaching to the choir, to you, Rick, because you're, you're here every day, but, you know, the number of emails that are coming through, the complaints, the people that they get in, you know, sometimes in a week, they're not getting to building inspections at all, because they're having to deal with so many zoning violations. But if they put out the zoning violations to actually get building permits issued and inspections done, and we have a number of big projects that are going to be starting soon, and again, you know, with hundreds of units being built and things of that nature, I'm not sure how, you know, I think the days of having a Building Department of one and or one and a half individuals is, you know, far behind us. So I think we, again, we've made, we, we took care of and brought the Police Department up to their minimum numbers. Last year, we made the commitment this year to bring the Fire Department up, and if everything passes a town meeting, they're gonna, they're gonna be at their capacity that they haven't been at, and I think the chief said almost 25 years. To think that we have less public safety folks today than we did 25 years ago, again, doesn't make any sense, we've made that commitment, but I also think with that, the third level of public safety here is the building, the building and zoning department, so I just want to keep that alive. I know yet, this has not fallen on, on deaf ears, but I'm hoping that we can get at least a couple more part-time local building inspectors, and then maybe start making a serious attempt at enforcing zoning violations, because it's just not getting done with, with one individual. And, and that's not a, anything negative on Erica, Erica, she's unbelievable. She's working just like, just like Matt is, they're out there, they're, they're getting hundreds and hundreds of complaints, there's hundreds of violations, and just one person can't, can't get to them all. So I, I just want to put that on the list.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
For raising that, because, you know, certainly Rick and Maureen brought that up this evening, because we've had an opening that we've not, not been able to fill in the local inspector's position, and they're going to go back and look at why, and I'm guessing, Rick, that has competitive analysis in it?
Yes, oh, yeah.
See what other communities are doing and how they're attracting.
Yes.
You know, the, the goal, right, is from a personnel perspective, to be able to attract You know, the goal, right, is from a personnel perspective, to be able to attract new candidates and be competitive in the surrounding area. The other thing is obviously beyond attracting them, to be able to retain them. And so one of the things we have to look at is what makes individuals go to other communities. We know that there's shortages across the state, so I'm not saying that we're losing out to other communities. Sometimes there are just no candidates, but what I want to do is be competitive. If there's two candidates out there in the area, I want to be competitive. So I know that Rick and Maureen, our HR Director, are looking at that. And you appropriately bring up zoning, because even that headcount doesn't look at zoning in the same way that a zoning enforcement officer would, and we have one of those. So, Mike, any comments to the Town Administrator's report?
Once again, Rick, I want to say, you know, great job. You're a busy guy during the daytime. In the last year, you and I have spoke quite a bit. You know, you're working at it consciously every single day. There are some issues that still need to be addressed. I know you're working on them with Maureen. I talk about it all the time. I think one of the, one of the smartest things we did recently was add the Human Resources Director to the community so that we could fine-tune our hiring practices and our job descriptions and our benefits and things like that. So again, I just wanted to, you know, say, good job and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in that, we will go to old business. We've got Town Administrator who's going to discuss town meeting warrant articles. See if there's any discussion that the Board would like to have on any particular article. Rick, maybe you could start with that update that we received from Zach. It looks like the immediate opportunity is to pass over an article.
He just wants the Board to consider Article 15, which would provide funding for, should the need arise, interim police chief services. Zach's analysis is that it's not likely that this will be needed. Any monies due to Chief Olafland could be paid from the Compensated Absences Fund. We do replenish that in October, as the Board knows. That's one of Zach's and the town's financial goals. So he, at this point, is suggesting that that may be one the Board considers passing over. There may not be, there should not be a need to fund for that purpose. Again, at the time, the warrant was prepared. The Board analyzed it. It was unclear as to whether or not we would need to do that.
And the other article that was in question is that search committee needing some funds. Were you able to?
Yes, again, we don't have a definitive number. I know the committee's meeting again tomorrow night. I believe it's on their agenda. So if, I don't think there's going to be dispute as to if we do need money, obviously, for advertising, for psychological testing, for physical testing, possibly site visits, should the need arise. I know that was done last time.
You just haven't finalized on that.
So they have not finalized a number. I've had conversations with Chris Moore and FinCom Chairman. He's aware that obviously there will be a need, and I think, I'm pretty sure FinCom will support that need. I just don't have a definitive number. By the next meeting, hopefully, we can clarify that. And as you know, the financial team will meet once we have all the numbers in place, which would include the Chairman of the Board, Chairman of the FinCom. But I don't have a definitive number for the Board tonight.
Okay. Any questions or comments related to the articles? I think we voted on everything that had to do with selectmen and some of the other articles that we wanted to take a stand on.
The only other thing Zach will be putting together, numbers for the funding, obviously, the police collective bargaining agreement and the collective bargaining for Burning Grove.
Okay. Outstanding. Thank you, Rick, for putting that together.
Thank you.
Next, we have Town Treasurer surplus, disposition surplus properties, specifically Bowden Drive Granite and Railroad Streets and Cedar Street. Mr. Pillar, Town Treasurer and Town Counsel. How you doing, Charles? Good to see you again.
Thank you, likewise.
We'll start with a pretty easy one. This parcel is Lot 25-16-198A. It is town-owned land at Bowden Drive. So the town is the owner of a parcel that's located on Bowden Drive in Milford. The land was originally configured in 1964 as an accessway to land north of Bowden Drive. The parcel was never developed as a street and eventually led to the ownership of the town. The parcel is .114 acres of land located in the RB zoning district. The parcel itself is generally not buildable, and one abutter has expressed a desire to purchase it. So I'm asking the Board to vote the, vote to declare the parcel surplus, and then I recommend to the Board to set an auction price if it chooses to.
Okay.
If I may just add, Mr. Chairman, the Town Administrator circulated a notice to all department heads in the town inquiring as to whether there's any municipal need or any interest in the property, and there was no response from any department head that there was a need for the town to maintain or retain this particular parcel.
No surprise at .1 acre, right? Developers will sometimes leave behind what would be access, but if they come at it a different way and change their plans, there's a lagging piece of town property that will stay in the books forever, if not for yourself, Chris, Town Counsel, or abutters sometimes bringing it to our attention.
This is an opportunity to put it back on the tax rolls. We will be generating tax revenue from it on a yearly basis.
Okay, and, you know, I got to believe we're not great stewards of some of this lagging property. My guess is that we're probably not maintaining it, mowing it, or doing any of the things that we would expect good neighbors to do. So we want to be good neighbors too, and in my opinion, release properties like that. So, any thoughts, Will, any comments or thoughts as it relates to this one? Because I'd like to take them up individually.
Yeah, oh, please do.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to declare the parcel surplus, Lot 25-16-198A.
And I would second that. I'll also vote in favor of that, so we've declared it surplus. You need guidance on a minimum cost, and is there any recommendation based on?
So just a little, little history on this. We acquired the land in 2003. There's back taxes owed on it of $4,809. The property value is currently $12,800. Recommend anywhere between $4,800 and $12,800 as a minimum.
All right, Charles, any thoughts?
Not as to the minimum bid, but I will say that having spoken with Mr. Pillar, I know that there is one party that's got some interest in this property. The abutter on the opposite side has a bit of an encroachment. He's started to trespass onto the property that's town-owned, and so it might be, in this particular instance, advantageous for the town to offer it at auction with a minimum bid to see if there's any competitiveness there so that we can maximize the benefit for the taxpayer.
Okay. You know, my thinking is to set the minimum high enough to be reasonable to the taxpayer, but also be enticing to folks that they, you know, we're not always going to get the assessed value. Sometimes we're going to get more, and sometimes we're going to get less. So you're suggesting somewhere between the taxes owed and the assessed value?
Yep.
All right.
If I may just make one, sorry, but if I may make one more comment. Oftentimes, on some of these parcels that aren't generating tax revenue, there's no real review of the assessment. Typically, an assessment is going to be valued at less than fair market value, but oftentimes with these small parcels, it's not. The assessment is actually exceeds market value because of not.
Exactly.
Et cetera.
At .14.
And nobody's there to protest it because we're not trying to collect taxes, and somebody's looking for an abatement or looking to have it reassessed.
Yeah, so I'm inclined, well, let me reach out to Board members. Is there any thoughts about how you want to proceed?
Well, I think it's just finding that, that number that kind of meets the qualifications that you just spoke about. That's what we've done in the past. I mean, I'm going to look to you for a recommendation. Do you have one?
Six, around $6,000.
Okay. Minimum bid of $6,000?
Yeah, that will cover all the back taxes and the time myself and Charles are going to put into it.
And there will be costs of an auction as well.
Yeah.
Chris, I've never valued .1 acres in the past, and I don't know how often that gets done.
Can I ask what an auction generally costs? Let's just roll it all in. Do we know?
It's just a time for myself and Charles. We have, we host them here.
Oh, you do? Okay.
We host them here. It's usually run by Town Counsel, and then I'm just there. And whoever from the public wants to show up and submit an offer.
In this case, we probably wouldn't have to advertise because the only people who would be interested would be the two or perhaps three abutters.
We'll still put it on the website.
But still, there's, there is an expense. There's an inherent expense in the time and the administrative paperwork.
Yeah, sure. Is that in the form of a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Second, if you want.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Only because I have a piece of property like this between my neighbor's house and my house that hasn't had taxes paid on it since 1937. I've done all the research. And back in the day with Jerry, he said what they eventually would do is they would have it appraised. What is it actually, what is it worth, whether it's through an appraisal agency, through a real estate agency? And then they would go to myself, my neighbor, divide it in half and say, let's just use a number. It's worth $40,000. Do you want to take half of 20? Do you want to take half of 20? If one of us says no, the other one gets the opportunity to buy it for the entire 40. If both of us say no, then it goes out to auction. Have we considered anything like that? And I know it's a very small piece of land, but I'm just saying.
Not for this parcel. We haven't.
You think it'd be worth it, or you think it's?
I don't know. I mean, I've only heard from one of the abutters, so I don't know about the second abutter, if they.
If you don't do that, how do we know what it's worth?
I'm just looking at, based off of.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just saying, how do we know?
It's a bid, though, right? It's a bidding process.
I will say this. Because of this particular parcel, the way it's situated, the way it was created, the primary interest is going to be from the abutters to the east and the west of the lot. And therefore, although we may not know the price, the only people who are going to buy it, somebody across the street isn't going to be interested in buying it. So the only people who would buy it would be the two abutters. So therefore, whatever they're willing to bid in a competitive auction, that would be the market value. But we can use the assessment or the taxes owed, at least as an estimation of the value. And I think that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
We could go get a broker's price opinion or something like that.
It could cost that amount of money, though, right?
It could cost a couple hundred dollars, and it would be a delay in time, and it may not be any more advantageous than them doing the same thing. Because as you know, a broker is going to look for similarly situated parcels and what the fair market value was for those, and where do you find a .1 acre comparable? Where are you going to find that in Milford that's not buildable and somebody's actually purchased it?
So I'll entertain a motion based on the Treasurer's recommendation.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to offer the land for sale to the abutters at a competitive auction, with the condition that within three months of the sale, the parcel be merged with the abutting parcel by the filing approval and recording of a plan, merging two parcels into a single tax parcel, and at a minimum bid of $6,000.
And I would second that. I'll also vote in favor of that and make it unanimous. Now we can go to the town-owned land in Granite and Railroad Streets.
So this parcel is located on Assessors Map 41-0-424. The town is the owner of a parcel of land at the intersection of Granite and Railroad Streets in Milford. The Railroad Streets designation comes from an early plan of the land in which the parcel was to be used as a public way. However, the land was never improved, and it's not even located near the present-day Railroad Street. The parcel is .073 acres, approximately 25 feet wide, of land located in the IA zoning district. This parcel is significantly encroached upon by the director abutter, the Fujiano Club, and it also has a problem with access due to a utility pole centered along its street's frontage. I'm asking the Board to, again, vote to declare parcel surplus. Again, this was also sent out to all town departments, and no one came back with anything on that.
Chris, this is smaller than the other one, right? The other one was .1 acres or 14, and this is .073. Didn't we have something similar to this behind the Dunkin' Donuts?
That was Railroad Street as well.
It was?
Used to go all the way up to Main Street. Now it's.
I thought I recalled something about this. Okay.
And I went by there today, and you can see from the pictures, those are the old Bocchi Courts, and there's Fujiano building space on that parcel land, so.
Okay.
I might just add a little bit of perhaps flavor and history to this. The site that now is that that corporation once was a homestead. It had a barn and a couple exterior structures, and this was a little tail to that parcel. When that corporation or someone prior to them developed that site, this was cut off, but it was intended to be a public way, never constructed. The topography of the lot is not the best. It's really not, aside from the existing encroachment, it's not something that is amenable to really good landscaping or anything of that nature. It is a bit of an eyesore. It's overgrown. It's a place where people do throw trash, particularly people maybe using the bike trail or throwing some trash in there. This is a parcel that is really only of any advantage to perhaps the party with the encroachment or that corporation. Otherwise, we're never going to get rid of it. It only has two abutters other than ourselves. It's not on the list on the tax rolls, I should say. It's not generating revenue. This would be an opportunity to fix a number of problems. One is the encroachment issue. Another is the overgrowth and the depositing of trash on the site. And finally, to get a parcel that's not tended to, therefore, back onto the rolls, generating revenue for the town.
Hopefully, get it cleaned up, right?
Yeah, one of the, one of the conditions that's suggested is that it be cleaned, it be leveled and landscaped and made to be aesthetically pleasing, particularly for those using the bike trail, which attracts a lot of folks from outside of Milford. So it's an opportunity for the town to realize multiple wins, not only getting tax revenue from this site, but getting it into a situation where it is of use to someone, because the town is never going to have any use for this very tiny parcel.
You know, and there's a case, Charles, where, you know, as mentioned earlier, where we're not great stewards of property like this, because frankly, we're not even looking at these slivers of land, and we're not good neighbors, and I agree with you. I agree with all your comments. Maybe, maybe there is an opportunity to have Bocchi Courts there or some other, you know, function or activity where, you know, it's, it becomes aesthetically pleasing again and the town's not responsible for it.
And as in the last one, this was brought to the town's attention by people in the neighborhood who said, that's town-owned land, and it wasn't something that we were even attentive to until it was brought to our attention.
So what's the recommendation, Chris, as it relates to this land next to the walking trail?
The property value of this parcel is $10,100. When we foreclosed on it, we backed taxes of $3,353 owed to the town.
And you're thinking something along the lines of what we just did, somewhere in the middle?
Somewhere in the middle would be my recommendation.
All right.
And I might say, just for clarity, we're looking for two separate votes, one to declare it surplus and the other to dispose of it.
Okay, why don't I do that as far, as far as the mechanics of the process go? Let me see the favor of the Board, see if they want to declare this surplus property as recommended. Will?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to declare the parcel surplus.
I would second that. Okay, I would also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Now, I'm going to go back to Chris and say, you know, using the same logic and rationale, we're looking at approximately, it's a little less, so a little less property. So we're talking about somewhere in the area of maybe $5,000. I don't know what you're.
Yeah, that would.
Satisfy.
Satisfy everything, yeah.
All right, is there a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just because this is, I was, I was there today, and this is of interest to me. Since there's really, there's two abutters, but there's one that's like on the land already, would we, do we have to go to auction rather than ask them for, to purchase it? Because what if someone does show up and buy it? Which is, which is allowed under a public auction, but there's part of a building on that land right now. The street pretty much goes even under a corner of the building.
If I could answer that question. Massachusetts General laws, chapter thirty B, section, I think it's six or sixteen, permits a municipality such as the town of Milford to make a direct disposition to, of a parcel of real estate. There are certain prerequisites to doing it, certain formalities that have to be followed, publication in the central register of the sale. But you can make a direct disposition of any land that has a value of less than thirty-six thousand dollars. This value is assessed at ten thousand one hundred, I believe it is, from the last time I looked at the field card on it. Ten thousand one hundred, I think, is a high evaluation for this parcel. And I think that's borne out by the treasurer's recommendation. But in any event, it's certainly well below the thirty-six thousand. And I think therefore, we can comfortably do a direct disposition if that's this board's choice. However, we could do an auction. Again, I see this as being one of those rare parcels where there's just going to be a very limited people, a pool of people who would want it. That corporation is an abutter, as is the social club. Social club has a significant encroachment, it would be natural for them to have interest in purchasing it. The, that corporation has, has a parking lot with, I think, one, two, maybe three access points. I don't think this, this would be very advantageous to them. It would give them access directly, well, actually, it wouldn't. It does provide access to Granite Street, but you have a telephone pole in the way. You can skirt around it, but it's going to be a problem no matter how you slice it. So I don't really see that corporation as being a viable buyer. But, I mean, you know, for the sake of process, we could, we could certainly auction it, but we don't have to.
Well, the reason I would, I think at this point, rather have a direct disposition with the owners of that building for a number of issues. But one is, you know, I don't expect, I expect to see the Fujiano with everything that's going on down there, have a Renaissance. I don't want to see that get taken away and then having a building put, you know, someone else coming in and them having to destroy that building. You know, so I would much rather go to the current owners with whatever price that this board sees fit. And, and do that. Because there's a lot of history there, it's been a club since, I don't know...
Why don't we do this? Because Mike had asked a similar question. And what I didn't think of in the process, and I apologize, Mike, for not understanding the depth of the question, is I suppose there's an opportunity for some, somebody with, you know, entrepreneurial ideas to go in there, disrupt the bid process, take the property and then hold it. Just as an opportunist. Not for any, because you can't, you cannot build on this property.
No.
And there's a building on it already.
And that encro, that encroachment will have to be addressed. It is an encroachment on town land and you can't get adverse possession against the town. So it's not a problem for us. But once we sell it, now the new buyer would, would sit in the shoes of the owner and could make, you know, could sit on it and certainly extort money to, for lack of a better term, from, from the abutter.
And one on Bowden Drive has the same potential, I guess, right?
It does.
That anybody from anywhere could say, yeah, I'm interested in that property. And it looks like the bidders are, you know, only interested in going to five thousand, I'm interested in going to ten. Because somebody's going to pay me eleven at the end of the day. You know, I don't know that that's always in the best interest of the community of the town. Because we, we just impacted two community members on Bowden Drive as an example. So both being under the limit, this one being less than even the Bowden Drive, what I'd like, what I'd like to do is rethink our vote and go to a process that Mike talked about where you let a butters make decisions in a targeted disposition and satisfy those requirements. But I do want to, before I vote on and complete this vote, I do want to go back to the Bowden Drive question and Mike's question, that we consider following a process that lets a butters, because I didn't think that a third party could walk in until I just heard the discussion.
Right.
And we don't need that necessarily on all of this, we want to satisfy the people who've been paying taxes for years.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would just ask about the Bowden Drive one, when there's possibly two abutters interested, while, you know, how you actually handle that.
Yeah.
You just reach out, you often tell them, tell them each, you know, what it's worth. The only reason I want, you know, I want the Fujiano Club treated very differently is because the building's on the property.
Yeah.
So there's something there. Well, however it got built back in the day, to be built on the road, it's there. And I don't want anyone being told that they're going to knock it down or whatever else, because it's literally on property that could go in the hands of someone else.
It should be given their first offer.
What we could do with Bowden Drive, if you were to reconsider that vote, would be to, similar to what we did on these parcels on the other side of four ninety-five, these landlot parcels, we could contact the butters on either side and indicate to them that the town has determined that the property is surplus and available to be, to be sold. And do you have an interest? We know one abutter definitely does. I think the other abutter has tried to encroach on, on the town property. Maybe he or she is not interested, was happy having it for free, but isn't going to pony up any cash for it. But if that way, if we'll, we'll find out if both parties are interested in offering money.
And they may decide to get together on it and...
They may, they may decide to split it, there may be all sorts of different things. But until we engage them, but maybe what we do is send out letters to engage them in the process, determine if there is interest on, from more than one person. If there's no interest from one of the abutters, then I think we could do a direct disposition with your vote of approval of that now.
Yeah.
Condition upon them being, and then if there is interest on both sides, then I think maybe, and they're not willing to split it, then I think maybe the auction is the best route to go.
Yeah, and we can always do that, nothing precludes that in the future. If neighbors don't get together and decide that they opt in.
It'll save you some work.
Yeah.
But what we do want to see in all of these situations, and I just want to emphasize this and explain the reasoning, because it's, it's something that we should be mindful of, is we want the owners, if they buy this spare lot, in either situation, we want them to merge it with their existing lot. We don't want them to own it as a separate lot. Because what will happen is twenty years from now, the new buyer will sit there and say, well, I can enjoy the benefits of the lot without paying the taxes. And it goes to tax-taking and we're all in the process all over again. If you merge it with the lot, the entire lot gets reassessed. It's that way in perpetuity unless the town approves of a subdivision. And you can't divest yourself of it by just refusing to pay taxes.
And with an owner, it's more likely to be cared for in the appropriate way, in my opinion. That's just anecdotal, but...
And we can place conditions, particularly on the Granite Street property, conditions that it be improved, that it be cleaned, that, you know, the topography be leveled somewhat, that the drainage, if there is any drainage that's going into the, the bike path be instead retained on the property. There's lots of things we can impose on this as conditions of sale.
Yeah, I don't know that I'd get crazy imposing conditions, because there we are, having not done it for, you know, tens of years. I, I want them adopting it as part of the parcel, I want them caring for it as part of the main general parcel. I just don't want, I'm cautious about overburdening the requirements for the property. Because, you know, we've been sitting back, letting it get, you know, dirty and...
Yeah, and I think in all fairness, I honestly, even though we can say that there are people that should have, that the Fujiano Club for years did, I mean, they had graduation parties there, there are people, you know, that bocce court was used, I mean, it was always in good condition with the exception of probably the last, definitely the last ten and probably more than that.
Why don't, why don't we do this, let's, let's re-vote on, or...
Reconsider.
Reconsider the vote on the Bowden Drive property to let it be a targeted, I'm sorry, what's your term? Direct disposition? And let town council move in that direction. I've offered that as a thought because it was born out of Mike's discussion and then Will's on a separate one, but...
And that would be with the treasurer, because he is the asset officer of his respective...
So is there a motion?
Do I make a motion to rescind, Mike?
No, you make a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
For these purposes.
Okay.
Seconded, and then you can, you can vote to reconsider it, then you need to take an affirmative vote.
For the direct disposition.
For the direct disposition.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to reconsider our vote regarding the Bowden Drive property.
I would second that. I'll vote unanimous. And so, is there a second motion? And I think it just has to follow number two, right?
Yep, I'll vote to offer the land for sale through a direct disposition with the condition within, oh, that's the wrong, was that the... With the condition that within three months of the sale, the parcel be merged with the abutting parcel by the filing approval and recording of a plan merging the two parcels into a single tax parcel. At a minimum price of six thousand dollars.
Okay.
I would second that.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. We good there, Jerry, with the Bowden Drive?
I'm sorry?
Are we good, Jerry?
Yes.
Jerry. Too many years. Charles, I apologize.
I have hair.
Touche. Okay. Now, let's take up the Granite Street property and...
We voted to declare a parcel, to the surplus.
Now, we're ready to make a vote for number, item number two on our sheet.
Okay. I'll make a motion to offer the land for sale through a direct disposition with the condition that within three months of the sale, the parcel be merged with the abutting parcel by the filing approval and recording of a plan merging the two parcels into a single tax parcel at a minimum price of five thousand dollars.
It's not a science, so that was the recommendation after we talked about it, so, okay.
Before I second, was that your recommendation, the five thousand? I'm sorry, I would second that.
Okay, and I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Is there anything else you want to bring up?
So the last two parcels. These parcels are parcel sixteen dash zero dash two and twenty-nine dash zero dash four. So, Mr. Chairman, at your February eleventh, two thousand nineteen meeting, an offer was presented from Milford Stone Company, Inc. To purchase the above parcels of land that was presented to you. The board asked me to send notices to the butters to see if there was any interest. We received a few phone calls with interest, but no offers were made on these parcels. The only offers we currently have is from Milford Stone Company. Rear Cedar Street, sixteen dash zero dash two, it's one point four acres of vacant land. Its assessed value was fourteen thousand eight hundred, they offered us fourteen thousand three hundred. And then I four ninety-five, twenty-nine dash zero dash four, it's in the IB district. And it's also one point four acres of vacant land that is valued at fourteen thousand seven hundred. They offered us fourteen thousand seven hundred of that. I recommend that the selectmen wish to either accept, reject, or counteroffer this offer that was made to you by Milford Stone Company. Attached in your packet, you'll find memos from the planning board that they had at their meeting on two nineteen, along with copies of the parcels, field card, and a map of where the parcels are located.
Okay. Any thoughts, recommendations, or motions from the members of the board? Go ahead, please.
I would respectfully request if you would table this to the next meeting. And I would ask that we bring in the chairman of the planning board, the chairman of COMCOM. And I know that they unanimously voted to keep the land. But I'm not an expert on water topology and, I'm sorry, watershed. And, you know, we did get a map. But I'd like them to come in and just explain, they're, they're the experts. If they're willing to come in, even with Mike Dean, come in to, if, Mr. Chairman, if you would allow this on the agenda, to come in and just explain to us, you know, where they got, how they got to where they were going, you know, before we take it to a vote.
Yeah, I'm just trying to anticipate what the questions are so that they could, rather than just generally invite them, if there are specific questions we would like to better understand. So one that jumps to mind as an example, Mike, is of Mike Dean. And, and that specifically is, you can have water on a watershed, or you can have land in a watershed that will never percolate water, will never allow water retention. If it's granite, it's granite. It isn't necessarily going to allow for water to go into the water protection or aquifer. So, so the question I would have is, what's the makeup of the land? Is it likely to, to, is it granite? Which is, well, albeit developable, it isn't necessarily going to protect anybody's drinking water. So, you know, I think that's the question I would have as it relates to Mike Dean. I think I understand the votes and we were given paperwork from, and I'm not sure I want to have the planning board, because they're voting that it's within a parcel, it's within a watershed, and we all understand that. Now the question is, is it helping our watershed? Is it granite? What does it look like? I haven't walked the property, so I have no idea what it could possibly be in terms of our watershed. But that's a question I would have for, for Mike Dean. I think that's the answer we're looking for.
More information?
To what extent, to what extent is it helpful for our aquifer versus being on a water protection area? Because here's what I can tell you, the land all around it is going to be developed. So, why don't we do that? Can we try that first?
I would appreciate that.
Can we have Mike Dean in the next meeting and have him, you know, somebody who's walked the land? Because I'm going to guess the planning board has not walked the land, I'm going to guess the water conservation commission has not walked that land. They know where it is on the map, they know where it is within our watershed protection area. But I'm talking about specifically its ability to retain and percolate water.
Mr. Chairman?
Because I think that's one of the problems in our area. Steve Tredle left, but he's been the one telling me for years. The answer and solution to water supply problems isn't drilling more wells. Because if, if, nobody hasn't noticed, we're on granite. Much of our water protection area is on granite. So that's one of the things a professional engineer has made, made note to me a few, more than a few times.
Go ahead. Yeah, no, I just wanted to just be very clear personally and say, you know, we, I'll support, I mean, you're the chairman, it's your agenda. I'll support anyone coming in and asking more questions. But with the planning board, the conservation commission, the town planner and everyone saying, don't sell, I'm not going to sell.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate it, that clarity is, is helpful. Because for folks, at the end of the day, they've got to count votes and I don't know where mine is. So I just want to hear more about the land.
Thank you.
And I agree with you, get more information, doesn't hurt. Okay, so that being said, trying to remember where we were relative to this. So at this point, you know, I, I would offer, ask the board to consider a denial at this point. Or do you just want to table it? Mike, you had asked that we table it.
I asked that we tabled it and put it in on the next agenda.
All right, is there anything time-sensitive about this?
No, right.
Request, if it goes to the next meeting?
We did receive a good faith check payment for several parcels upon which an offer was received. I think the check's stale by now.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's no need for urgency on our part.
Yeah, they mailed us an unsolicited check. And while we appreciate their good faith request, we're not ready to move on anything, so, okay. All right, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Now, we have applications to review for the facade program. And Rick, could you guide us through this?
Yeah, basically, we'll start with, if we could, eighty-nine Main Street. There's two packets there. This application has been vetted by the subcommittee of the downtown revitalization committee. You see their evaluation form there. They are recommending that we approve this to go forward. Our contractor is ready to go, he just wants to know that the board is in approval. So this one is ready to go. I think there are some renderings at the back of it to show those were done by HPA Design, Inc., the architect that we're using for this project. And I think Laura has signed off on it.
And this one is time-sensitive, right, Rick?
Well, yeah, I want to say yes, because, I mean, they're ready to go. Obviously, the funds need to be, or at least we need to make a very good attempt to use these funds by July thirtieth. So I would not recommend, I would hope that this board would approve both these tonight.
Okay.
So that I can let both the architect and the contractor sign, sign plus that they're ready to go forward. Now, you see the price is twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So what will happen is, I believe, they will put that twenty, they will put up six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty thousand will come out of the program. Zach, our finance director, has already set up the monies. The check has been delivered by the owner of eighty-nine Main Street. So their personal funds are now in the town possession. Because all bills are going to come through, through, through the town and will be paid... Because all bills are going to come through, through the town, and will be paid pro rata from either the grant money and/or the...
So obviously, Michael's in favor of it from eighty-nine.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. They...
He's the applicant, right?
Yeah, the applicant. He met with Henry.
Okay.
They got together to approve the design. The way it works is the architect meets with the owner applicant.
Okay, okay.
And they have to come to some kind of agreement on the actual design, on the project itself. Once that's done, Sign Plus goes in and then estimates the project and puts a number to the project. At that point, then, everything goes to the subcommittee. The subcommittee did meet and did approve it.
Yeah, very impressive renderings. Good-looking building. They can only help, but, so why don't we take up the proposal for eighty-nine Main Street and...
Make a motion to approve the application for eighty-nine Main Street.
I would second that. I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
Also make a motion to support the application for one sixty-four Main Street and two oh eight Main Street.
And again, the same process was followed here. I think you'll see, I think there's renderings, I think one of them doesn't require renderings because it's more painting...
It's difficult to see.
...type project. Yeah, that one's not as...
Not as clear as the eighty-nine.
Yeah, didn't come out swell. But again...
Is it the same?
It's the same. Again, the funds have already been provided by the applicant, which is Downtown Realty LLC. It's been graded by the subcommittee, and they have recommended to go forward with the projects on...
I'm sorry, what I meant, Rick, is the awning going to be the same on this building as in on eighty-nine?
I don't know if, this is not, well, this is not such as an awning. This is more signage, lighting, painting, fascette board, so it's a little different type project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Project, and not all awnings, the project has more scope to it than that.
I see, I see.
This is more a painting type, so you don't see the renderings that you saw.
Right, okay.
Four eighty-nine.
I see it now.
Yeah.
You made the motion, what?
Yes.
I would second that. I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Is there old business from the members of the board that'd like to bring up?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
If not, we'll go to new business. We have town administrator regarding secondhand pool table, bowling alley licenses.
Yeah, I'd just be looking for the board to vote to renew the licenses as listed on the sheet before you.
All right. And for the benefit of the public, I'm happy to read them. We're talking about the renewal of secondhand licenses for two thousand nineteen. Baza Jewelry and Gifts, one ninety-six Main Street. Central Street resale, two Central Street. Nathan's Jewelers, one fifty-seven Main Street. TJ Collectibles, one sixty Main Street. Gon Rivka Centers Treasure and Trinkets, three nineteen and a half Main Street. And we're also talking about the renewal of pool table licenses. Fun Zone LLC doing business as Pins, one ten Main Street. Hoboken Citizen Club, two fifty-two Central Street. Ty Tran doing business as Lucky Nine, one nineteen East Main Street. And the renewal of a bowling alley license. Fun Zone LLC doing business as Pins. And for the benefit of speed, I'll take these all as one group, one motion, and if somebody would like to pull them out, then we can take them individually if they so choose.
I'll make a motion to approve as listed.
I would second it. All right, so I'll vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have a police chief request for responding to a community member regarding a crosswalk, East Main Street at Cook Street. And the chief has communicated with us that he's had an opportunity to look at it. He went to the area, made observations. As Mr. Spinelli had indicated, the nearest crosswalk to west of the intersection is located Sacred Heart Church, and nearest crosswalk to the east is located Olivas. Given the number of residents and business areas, East Main Street and Cook Street, I believe the crosswalk may be warranted so pedestrians can cross East Main Street safely. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the crosswalk at East Main Street and at Cook Street.
I would second that as well. I'll also vote in favor of that. That's unanimous.
Never too much safety.
Next, we have a Milford Historical Commission request to accept a gift, and the gift is from Jeffrey G. Hanum and Nicole Madder. Please advise this donation from Nicole and Jeff due to the Milford Historical Commission in memory of Lynn Lovell. Very nice, thoughtful gesture. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the gift.
I would second that. All right. I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, we have correspondence, and we have, they are specifically resignation letters. One, we have notifying us that our town, in the town administrator's office, our administrative assistant to the town administrator, Danielli Marias Fonseca, has resigned and should be moving on to the school department, and she indicates here wishing the town the best of luck and future success, and offering any assistance to transition with the successor.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
And I would second that as well. All right. And then there is a note from Tom Riley. Tom Riley also has indicated that his position on the cultural council, he's unable to participate due to his time and family obligations, and will be resigning.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
I would second that. And as always, letters go to those individuals thanking them.
Yep.
Okay.
Bill?
Yes.
Could I just ask, regarding the cultural council, there was a flurry of emails regarding the number of members for the cultural council? And by statute, we're allowed to have a minimum of whatever it is to a maximum of twenty-two?
Correct, yeah. I've discussed this with Charles, I believe. We're safe. We did have a quorum. Jerry Edens, to her credit, has done a nice job in contacting the existing members.
It is at twenty-two, right?
It is. I believe it's similar to what we do with the youth commission.
Yeah, I thought so, okay.
Yeah.
So as long as you go by that number, you know what a quorum is.
And I don't think that, I don't think the numbers are as important as getting it revitalized.
Again, I agree with you one hundred percent. Jerry's doing a nice job.
Yeah, I only brought that, no, Jerry's great anyway. I just, the only reason I brought that up is because I didn't know if we, I thought we had it established.
I know we don't have that many on the youth commission, so, and the quorum is not a much...
It gets unruly.
And it does, so...
Yeah, and the twenty-two counts as your quorum if that's, if you have them filled. If you only have eleven people, then...
Exactly. Otherwise, the youth commission, I don't know how they met all these years.
Yeah, yeah. Once again, it's how did we come to an even number?
Yeah.
That I don't know. I don't know if any of us were here and that happened.
You have a committee with an even number.
Well, Michael, to be honest with you, that's what I was going to say. If we actually do had to vote on it, I would just ask that if they're not filled, if we're not removing anyone, make it twenty-one.
Yeah.
So you don't have an even number, because we've had that discussion before.
They have already had an initial meeting, and they have a second one scheduled in May, so...
Great.
They, Jerry and the members that this board appointed, I guess, a couple of months ago.
And thank you for helping.
For taking the initiative on that, so I want to thank Jerry on that.
All right, and we'll thank Jerry, and also thank you for your help in getting that pointed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I did not ask if anybody had new business. I'd like to go back and ask.
Just the only, the annual license establishment activity report is...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped back, because I didn't ask more members if there was new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have any. Thank you very much. Correspondence. We have correspondence from the police chief, comes in quarterly reports, giving us the annual license establishment activity report. And basically, what it does is it tells us when there was public safety involvement, police involvement in any of our licensed facilities or businesses in the community. And so we get an opportunity to look at this at a quarterly basis, and we see its accumulation and any unique issues we bring up. Is there anything that the board members would like to highlight out of this report that is of concern or note?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. Next, we have executive session, and for the purposes of executive session, we have town council litigation regarding Milford versus Emily Kichoni. We have town council litigation regarding Benjamin Moore. We have town council, we're meeting with town council to discuss litigation as it relates to the third-party settlement regarding Kevin O'Laughlin.